I'm going to call the main door at 6:01 or 6:31 PM. And if we please all rise again for our pledge allegiance. Councilmember Cash, who's leading this pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please let me stand over here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Both born and pre-born.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. We'll call Mr. Duff.
Yes, Councilmember Cash.
Here, sir.
Councilmember Johnson, here. Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Heffron.
Present.
It is weird. I thought it wasn't there.
Here. Is that for public comment or is that for announcement?
And Pam said she put it on LV3.
This is for the housing.
I said, "Thank you."
This is the time we set aside for announcements of upcoming community events. And I think we have Sherry Best that would like to speak. Come on up.
And say something.
I will. All right, I want to start by saying that the Cruze Le Verne Car Show was a lot of fun. First time I've attended the car show, I must admit. I can't lie about that. But it was very interesting. And the Historical Society made some money. And we also made a lot of connections and met people. And had a wonderful opportunity. Two of Rob Zamboni's students from Bonita High School were there in exchange for a free T-shirt from the Historical Society. They stayed and they talked to people who came by and had questions. So I thought this was a great opportunity for them for engagement. So that is now passed and we're on to the next date, which is the 10th of December. I would like to invite everybody to drop by our vintage tour on the 10th of December from 1 until 5 PM in the afternoon. We will meet at 2242 Third Street. We're going to be touring three homes. One home is the David Wittenstaff home. Another is the McClellan house. And then we're also going to be touring the Purple Palace next to the David Wittenstaff's house owned by the Kalusick family. Between 3 and 4 PM, the University of Laverne Oral Organization will meet us in song wearing ugly Christmas sweaters. So show up and belt out some carols and have a good time. And take a flyer and pass it along and come do some shopping. All of our jelly is ready for sale. So now's the time. Okay, I'll put out the extras over here on my way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Anybody else have to any announcements or anything? Ms. Bocham, come on up.
On Thursday, December 8th at 6 PM, Rock of the Foothills Church in Bush Hall, the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens will be having a Q and A with our mayor, Mr. Heffron. He's going to give us a six-month update as to what's been going on in the city since the election and will be available for questions and answers. And so we look forward to hearing about that. We're also asking that residents help raise money or donate to the wreaths across America, which are the wreaths that get placed on veterans, headstones or cemetery face markers. They're only $15 each. And so we were looking to get enough donations or wreath gifts to cover all of the Laverne cemeteries. So we still need 213 more wreaths. And it's only until December 17th. So we're running out of time. So we really need to work on that as a community. Also, Harvest Festival, which is the original art and craft show at the Fairplex. It's going to be on Friday, December 2nd, Saturday, December 3rd, and Sunday, the 4th. Friday, 10 to 5, Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday, 10 to 4. General admission is $9. Seniors are only $7. Youth from 13 to 17 are $4 and children under 12 are free. This is the first year they're having it since COVID. And so everybody's looking forward to the arts that they may have been making during this time. And there will be some very nice displays on being displayed, I'm sorry. And also, since Sherry just mentioned the car show and how successful it was, wanted to remind those that they have the Classic Car Swap Meet at the Fairplex on Sunday, December 4th. It's 5 AM to 2 PM and it is every first Sunday of the month during those times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bocham had mentioned about the wreaths across America. And they're actually at 196 right now, Ms. Bocham. So 169 wreaths are sponsored. Can we post this on the website, on our website for the city? We'll go ahead and post that, but it's 15 bucks a wreath. It's something and I went to it, I think it was, I can't remember because COVID has kind of got me all messed up as far as we were. But they did this and it was really cool. I mean, they had a lot of people there, they had scouts, they had all sorts of organizations. And then everybody scatters out and they put the wreaths on all of the gravestones and it is really, really neat. So for $15, I think this is a really good cause and they're very, very well-run organization. So we'll post this on the website. So thank you, Ms. Bocham, for saying that. But it's, I'd like to see a zero and they have 100% participation. So, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, and holiday cheer keeps going. We have the Bonita High School Yuletide Choir Festival on December 10th at 2 PM and 7 PM at the Bonita Center for the Arts. And tickets were going on sale online. So again, Yuletide for the Bonita Choir at December 10th at 2 PM. And they have two shows and one at 7 PM.
Councilmember Allen.
I was trying to just run, yes. Just an update for everyone for Christmas morning. They are looking for volunteers. So if you are available and willing to help the day of Christmas morning, they should be up on, I think it's on our website now, the link to volunteer. So if you go and look, you can do it. I know it's a big commitment and I know that's a lot of time away. But if you can do it or if you have maybe kids or grandkids that maybe are looking for service hours, this is a good way for them to get those service hours. So do you sign up?
Okay. Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just, you guys took some stuff I was going to say. But one thing, yeah, the wreaths across America are very important. When I saw that, I'll be out there volunteering. And of course, we didn't donate to that. Hopefully, we will get to zero, God willing. Another thing is I am going to be planning. It's in the planning phase that we're going to have the Sparks of Love. As you know, the great city of the Burnfire Department is doing the Sparks of Love. Please donate, unwrap gift. I'll be hosting another kickoff event probably around mid-part of December. More to follow on that regarding, if you can, come by and donate a gift. Those Sparks of Love, those toys, they stay here in Laverne. So it's really important to give that back into our community. So that's all.
Councilmember Johnson. Nice haircut.
I've got my family here today.
Hello, Trevor.
Very good. We had a good week with the Rotary Club. We delivered 75 meals to families in Laverne. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yeah, we, I think I delivered 15. And you don't realize how people are in need these days. And you don't realize it until you hit their doorstep and you open their door and realize what they don't have. And it's, so we have a little extra and there's places where you can donate. I would suggest you do that because there's other people that really need this right now. And I was quite surprised. Every year, it just seems to, it's kind of overwhelming sometimes. You just hit your car and realize what you have and what these people don't have. And so, and we're a very fortunate city to have such great residents. We do have residents in need. So there's one, also one more, a couple of things, actually. We have the Laverne All-Stars Softball Game Toy Drive, Thursday, December 8th, Wheeler Park. And this is the LVFA and the LVPoA, Mr. Gonzalez, present the 10th Annual. So and also, if you bring and unwrap a $5 unwrapped toy, you'll get in free. And it starts at 5 o'clock till 9:30 PM. Sorry, my glasses aren't working. And basically, they'll have the Bonita High School students, but also the firefighters against the police officers. So it's going to be a lot of fun. So also, on December 3rd, we have the tree lighting ceremony. And that's at, is that at 4:00, 4 o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six, but they're also doing the square at 4:00.
The square at 4:00. And then they'll have the, which is, who will be doing the Christmas Carol? Who's going to sing the?
George. George.
George. George Henderson will be doing the Night Before Christmas. And then when it gets dark, obviously, we'll probably be doing the tree lighting. That's a brand-new Monero Square. I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but it looks really good. Thank you, Mr. Shear. Appreciate that. It really looks nice. Really looks nice. So that's that one and I think there'll be others. But we've got, it's going to be fun back this year. So we've got a lot of things going on. So with that, I will move to consent calendar. Do we have anything pulled from the consent calendar? Is anybody calling in on that? Did they want to pull it?
Mr. Bowen's on line and I don't know if you want to ask him or not.
Mr. Bowen, if you want to raise your hand, please do. Otherwise, we'll move through the consent calendar. There it goes.
So we assume that he wants that. Go ahead, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen? Did we lose him?
We lost him.
He's got it over his. Well, he's.
Unless he's on a heel.
Oh. He's just not talking.
He's calling himself, which he is. It's. He's not calling him. My phone or his phone is going to be more of. So I said, "Do you want to pull?" Because he was not asking to pull it. So and I don't have anything on my email. You don't have anything. I don't see anything. And this is my 30.
It seems like the other microphone is. He does?
He does.
We do.
Well, I see nothing on, I see nothing on my emails or anything. Does anybody have any other emails? I have no phone messages. I have no texts. That he wanted to do something with that.
I just messaged him and he didn't reply, so.
Okay, we're going to move forward. With that, under consent calendar, do I have a motion?
I so moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second, please.
Up there again.
Vote.
Richard's name's back up.
Yeah, it disappeared for a few minutes.
That vote's not in there. Your vote's not close there.
Can't you come back to it?
I mean, it can be a discussion, I guess, but it's already been passed, so.
And that vote passed 5:00.
Let's try to bring him on.
Sure.
Technology.
Don't ask me, I'm on. Technology. I walked through my house and I lose the signal three times and bust out.
Were they saying they wanted, he was trying to come back in? But he's on the screen.
He's on the screen.
Well, that's an attendees.
Oh, is he in Texas?
That just showed everybody that's in there. He's not reading.
Okay. We move on.
Is he in Texas?
Okay, then we move to item number six, public hearing. 2021-2029 Housing Element Update. Mr. Shear, Development Director Shear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm happy to bring forth to you this evening the draft housing element update. The city's been working with our consultant for the last two years on. As you're aware, the Planning Commission had a meeting on November 2nd where they voted 3 to 1 to recommend that the city council adopt this draft housing element. You did receive an email today from Councilwoman Planning Commissioner Thomas Allison, which kind of explained his reasonings for him voting no. I see he's also on the call today, so you might want to speak to have a public comment as well. In addition, we did receive one additional public comment late last week after the Sudden Attack was completed. That was forwarded to you last Thursday as a submitted public comment. There's been some misinformation in the community about whether this housing element is tied to the Fairplex's current efforts to establish a specific plan in the city of Pomona. They are not related. These are two separate things. Our housing element controls properties in the city of Laverne only. And as of a year later, we're not resuming these properties in the city as part of this process. Pomona's efforts on a specific plan in the city of Pomona is a completely separate effort that's just getting underway. But there was a recent community meeting last week about it. So I understand how it could be merged, but this is not for second. I also wanted to just say that, you know, staff in the planning commission are recommending that you adopt Resolution Number 22-77, which is approving the draft agreement, our housing element update and the related sequel determination. But I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Truppiano with the Denova Planning Group, who's going to be doing the presentation. Lisa Crand, our Deputy City Attorney, is also here to help answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Amanda. How are you?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having me back. Tonight's presentation is very similar in some ways to the briefing provided to this group last month. But I didn't want to share it again in this official format and allow you to pose additional questions or have your deliberations and for the benefit of the public as well. So with that, you can go ahead and advance the slide. So as a reminder, the city has been working actively to establish a housing element that can be found in compliance with state housing law for the better part of two years. While the city is also completing a comprehensive update to its entire general plan, housing elements are required to be updated on a certain schedule every eight years required by the state. So as a result of that schedule, it was important that we spent the past 18 months to two years focusing on preparing that housing element for your consideration and then being able to have strong guidance to move forward with the remaining general plan update effort. So we're at the conclusion of this multi-year effort related to the housing element, where we have received direction from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or you might hear me refer to them as HCD, that the draft presented for your consideration tonight and recommended by the Planning Commission Council or to the city council is in compliance with all components of state housing law and upon its adoption can be found and certified by that state department as meeting those requirements. Next slide. So this is just presenting a summary of many of the issues I just discussed, but I wanted to highlight a few of the key milestones that have occurred since the city released its draft housing element in December of last year. In early December of 2021, the city did release a draft of the work for public review as well as review by HCD. In February, the city received comments back from the, from the state's department providing direction on some modifications necessary to the draft in order to comply with all of the various components of that state housing law requirement. The city has posted two rounds of subsequent draft elements available for 30-day public reviews each. Continues to solicit public input at the planning commission meeting, at tonight's meeting for your consideration as well. All of the input received from the public has been provided as appendix B to the housing element. The city submitted the second revision to its draft housing element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development in early August. And following their 60-day review, we did receive their notification that the changes proposed to that draft do meet all of their requirements and that the city should proceed with reviewing it at a series of public hearings. And upon the element's adoption, we would resubmit that back to HCD for their final review and confirmation that ultimately, the revisions they had previously seen were in fact the version that was adopted and just going through that confirmation process. We did host a presentation to the city council in the middle of October of last month. And then we did receive that direction from planning commission recommending that the city council adopt that at their regular meeting or at their meeting in early November. Next slide. So as I had mentioned, every city and county in California must have a housing element. This is one chapter or one element of your general plan. And it is required to be updated on a regular cycle. We update it every eight years and we're in the sixth cycle. So you can imagine that housing elements have been around in California for quite some time. And the city of Laverne has always had a housing element. This is just an update to your housing element looking forward to the next eight years. This planning period covers 2021 through 2029. And I did want to just highlight for perspective, the other regions in Southern California have also been updating their housing elements. The Southern California Association of Governments region or the SCAG region has 196 agencies, of which Laverne is one. There are 42 agencies approximately that are in compliance by that early October timeframe. That numbers gotten a little bit higher over the past several weeks just as some cities have made significant progress. But we're somewhere around the 35% compliance rate. In LA County, that's about the same, 35 or 39%. So we want to just emphasize that Laverne's in a very advantageous position right now to have that confidence from HCD that your housing element does meet those requirements and upon its adoption could be certified in the in compliance section here. Next slide. Next one. It's a little different when I'm doing the clicker. We can kind of do the pauses, but all speed through this. So a housing element, like I mentioned, is a one chapter of your general plan. It lays out the city's plan for the next eight years in regards to housing for your current as well as future residents. And we are also looking at residents of different income levels, different backgrounds, education, jobs, and housing needs. Next slide. The 2021 to 2029 housing element is required to essentially consider four key topics. We need to demonstrate that there's adequate land available to meet the city's regional housing need. We'll spend a few more slides talking about that. The housing element also has to include specific programs that help facilitate the development of affordable housing. City of Laverne itself does not build housing, but the private market builds both affordable and market rate units. The housing element needs to identify and mitigate any potential constraints, both government constraints and non-government constraints, to the development or supply or affordability of housing. And a new requirement for the cycle is the city needs to demonstrate promoting equal access to fair housing opportunities for officers. Next slide. So we, I mentioned on the prior slide that the city needs to consider its fair share of regional housing needs and demonstrate that your land use plan and your zoning map provide the adequate land available to accommodate that. So your fair share at the local level is really driven by kind of a pyramid process that starts at the top, the state of California. Says over the next planning period, so over the next eight years, how many housing units need to be developed throughout the entire state in order to meet our projected housing needs. That estimate for the next eight years is just shy of 4 million units. A portion of that is given to each of those regional agencies. So for Laverne, that'd be the SCAG region. The SCAG region receives an allocation of about 1.3 million units for this planning period. And using a methodology that's reviewed and approved by the state and actually part of the housing element legislation, each city receives allocation. That's what we consider your fair share or your proportion of regional growth. So that methodology is based on a number of factors that was reviewed and available for public input, input from cities and counties, and ultimately approved by HCD and the state in distributing that local share. Next slide. So that regional housing needs allocation or your RENA is also broken down by income category. So not only are we provided guidance on the number of units that we need to demonstrate can be accommodated, we also have to think about planning for different types of housing that serve households of different incomes. So everyone from firefighters and teachers and people working at your grocery store to working professionals and executives, they all have a role to play in that regional housing need. Next slide. So the city's RENA for the 2021 to 2029 planning period is 1,346 units. And about half of those need to be demonstrated as potentially affordable to those Laverne households and working professionals, entry-level homes. And you can see the RENA broken down on the slide here. It's also, of course, included in the element. Next slide. So just to clarify, the city of Laverne itself is not required or obligated to build housing. That's not what the housing element says and it's not what the state requires. But what the state does require and what the housing element sets the stage for is identifying land in the city with existing zoning and existing general plan allocations that allow housing to be developed and allowing the private market to develop housing of all different types and shapes and incomes. Next slide. So we've all lived probably different types of housing in our own lives. I know that you might prefer a different type of housing as a young working professional versus raising a family or into retirement. So the housing element is really designed to identify the need that a variety of housing options really serves both current and future residents. It can also serve as a wonderful tool to attract and retain the business communities who continually identify the need for having adequate and affordable housing close to jobs as being a key indicator for locations that they choose to grow and expand their businesses. Next slide. This is just an example of kind of how different housing looks. It can be small, like accessory dwelling units. It can be your traditional single-family homes. It can be multifamily or apartment developments. It could be part of mixed-use projects where the ground floor are offices or commercial uses and the upper floors are residential. And affordable or market rate units oftentimes look very similar. So shown on the screen are, the one project is 100% affordable. One project is more creative. And you can see with good quality design and guidance, those projects can look the same for me all the time. So the housing element itself is organized into two primary sections and two appendices. So the first part is your housing plan. That's the first 50 pages or so. That contains your goals, policies, programs, and objectives or your goals in terms of new production over the next eight years. And the background report is the next 200 pages or so. That talks about the city's progress towards meeting your goals and programs from your prior cycle, from your fifth cycle. It talks about your current and future housing needs. It identifies and evaluates constraints to housing. It evaluates your housing resources, including land available, as well as an assessment of fair housing goals and progress. The housing element includes five key goals largely related to those topic areas I discussed earlier. The housing element includes five key goals largely related to those topic areas I discussed earlier. The first, essentially preserving and improving your existing housing stock in neighborhoods. Your second, to provide a variety of housing options to meet the needs of different incomes and segments of the community. The third is to minimize government constraints, to minimize constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and the development of housing. The fourth is a community with a diverse range of housing options that meets the physical, social, and economic needs of existing and future residents. And the fifth, the duty to affirmatively further fair housing. The housing plan also includes a number of specific programs that direct the city on actions to take over the next eight years to implement those goals. The housing element includes 29 programs. They are organized into the five topic areas related to the goals I just mentioned. 24 of those programs are largely carryover programs of your current housing element. So Laverne had already done a really good job of being very specific in your programs, providing clear direction on expectations for implementing those goals. We did add five new programs to the housing plan, largely to address state requirements, but they've also been customized to meet the local needs of Laverne as well. Those include a specific program on the process to replace affordable housing. So if an existing affordable unit was to be transitioned into a different use in the future, the city has an obligation to ensure that affordable units are replaced at the same income level where they're being displaced. A program to direct the city and staff specifically to monitor progress towards meeting your RINA and ensuring that adequate land remains available to accommodate your RINA throughout the planning period. There is a program directing the city on how you evaluate projects that are included on sites that have been included on your inventory for numerous cycles. So this is a piece of the state legislation that basically says, if you keep putting forward the same site over and over again and you keep saying this is a good spot for housing, you need to make it a little bit easier for housing to be developed there if it never happens. We have a specific program dedicated to affirmatively furthering fair housing. In a lot of ways, this program just summarizes the components of other programs that support the fair housing goals of the city. And then there's a program dedicated to the city's general plan update and ensuring that that update will be consistent with the housing element. Next slide. So speaking specifically on the RINA strategy, we essentially look at two key factors. We can look at the city's current progress towards the RINA. So projects that are approved or under construction, those will obviously come online during the planning period. We get to consider those as credits towards your RINA. And then we identify available land to accommodate your remaining RINA so anything that wasn't available to be accommodated through those credits. So accommodating your remaining RINA here in Laverne essentially takes three approaches. The first is to look at projects that are proposed. So they're not yet approved, but will be brought forward through the public hearing process. We can look to those as potential options to accommodate a portion of the RINA. We can look to accessory dwelling units or accessory dwelling units the state's provided as methodology on how we quantify that. Essentially, we take an average of the past three years, multiply that by the eight-year planning period. We have a good estimate of the number of ADUs we might expect based on that history of development. And we are also looking at sites available in the Old Town Laverne specific plan that have already been approved, designated, and entitled for residential development via the approval of that specific plan previously. So as Eric had mentioned, just to be crystal clear, this demonstrates that the city of Laverne has sufficient land available at your existing zoning and existing general plan designations to accommodate your RINA. That doesn't preclude property owners from submitting applications for development in other areas of the city. But what this does is say, your existing planning documents already set the stage to allow you to accommodate your RINA. No re-zonings, no redesignations are required as it relates to accommodating your regional need for housing. Next slide. The intent is this, certainly not to have you read all of the individual numbers on the screen, but to demonstrate that these strategies all work together to create housing opportunities in different ways and for different income levels and ultimately provide the city a small surplus of sites available to accommodate your RINA during that planning period. So you have a little wiggle room as projects come and go and the exact income levels are established at credits or review. An exhibit is provided in the housing element as it relates to those specific sites available. We've distinguished between sites of different sizes. They are associated with different income categories as you can see on the screen and included in the document. So from here, we did, we did hear from the planning commission. Again, that recommended with a three-one vote, with one absent, that the city council approved the housing element. We're here obviously tonight to allow you to delivery, ask staff or myself any questions, and for the public to provide comments. We have completed minor typographical edits. There were two specific minor typos that didn't change the content or analysis of the element that have been brought to our attention. One was on the label of exhibit. We did update the name on that label. And then we also had a minor revision. We referenced the incorrect general plan designation on a prior project and we've gone ahead and corrected that. Those are all part of this public review process. So we don't change the document in the middle of that review process. We record those comments and we are making those modifications. And those would be reflected on the document should you adopt it. That would, those changes and any other direction you provide us would be included in the document that's returned to the state for their final review and approval. And I did want to just highlight that the state has provided that approval conditionally that is based on the element that they have reviewed. Any subsequent significant changes to strategy, programs, content, or analysis, obviously, they reserve the right to reopen their review and reconsider any modifications to that draft. So that letter demonstrating that the housing element is in compliance is based on the document and the revisions brought forward for you tonight. With that, we are also excited to be able to confirm the land use plan now that we have kind of an established approach to the housing element. And we worked closely with the General Plan Advisory Committee throughout 2018 and 19 to really develop the rest of your general plan element. So we are hopeful that once we can kind of conclude the housing element focused work, we'll be able to re-engage the public with the planning commission and with yourselves to kind of pivot back towards the general plan update and ultimately start that environmental review and work on that comprehensive approach so that all of those policy documents really work hand in hand. And they are all prepared to the latest and greatest state requirements and set the stage for the next 20 years. I did want to just highlight, this is my concluding slide, that the housing programs do lay out some specifics that are required to be implemented in order for the city to maintain its certified housing element. So every year, staff prepares an annual progress report that tells the state, what did we do this year? And how did we implement the programs we said we were going to implement? I just wanted to kind of daylight a number of updates to the zoning code that will need to be made in order for compliance to be maintained. Those are included in a specific program in the housing plan. They primarily relate to the way different uses are regulated or permitted and ultimately reducing those government constraints to the production and affordability of housing. All of these are required by state law and are required to be implemented within the next three years. So staff would be bringing those forward as necessary. And again, they are required to be completed in order to maintain that certification. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'll certainly be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to go to public comment and we'll come back. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment on this. Mr. Gavaldon, you have a card here.
Thank you. Good evening. I wish I would have been able to see that presentation before I thought about whether it was a state night, but I don't know. Follow-up and public comment later on tonight. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to approving the Laverne housing element as it's written today. I'm not against development or growth. I want to welcome everybody into the city, but I don't want to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. So in that sense, I guess I'm against forced development and contrived growth that we're talking about tonight. I acknowledge the staff has done their best to engage and evolve our community in its composition. I know that it meets the obligations of the staff regarding a compliant work product. I know it's probably not keeping most of Laverne from getting a good night's sleep tonight. And it's likely more than 99% of Laverne people don't even know this was taking place tonight. So it's upon this council and your elected representative people of Laverne who live here today to make sure that what you're about to vote on is not just in their best interest, but what you have done in your job to make sure of your own effort, what comes of your vote tonight. So perhaps one of the most important decisions in your time on council today and for tomorrow will be to understand for yourself what you are potentially saying yes to for the future Laverne. So as the consultant said, it's about the next 10, 15, 20 years. What will it look like then if we open the door today? So by the end of tonight, you in my eyes will be voting to acquiesce to the overreach of the state officials who are promoting and subsidizing excessive enforced housing developments. You're voting to not put forward an effort to retain local control of our city. This is something I've come before you twice, asking me to consider proactively working with other cities around Laverne who have chosen to fight back and fight to retain the local control of their growth. The last time I asked, the answer provided was, quote, "The council has been advised by the city's attorney office that adopting any resolution to support for any potential future ballot measure would be premature as the earliest anything would be on the ballot is in November 24. When it's possible, the city council would be made up of new individuals with different opinions and manner." Translation, we will sit back and wait to see what happens and let the others determine our policy and do not want to take a proactive approach to retaining local control because we're okay following Sacramento. By voting yes, you are agreeing to a plan that uses RINA numbers, AKA fair share numbers, that were fraught with need for housing nobody can seem to provide or articulate a formula for. The numbers, no less, were found by the state's otters office to be unreliable and pose serious credibility, AKA the methodology, to their process concerns. By voting yes, you are agreeing to bring into Laverne enforced housing elements that do not address or provide a proactive plan or solution to the existing anticipated traffic issues that will affect all Laverne. These are numerous, some growing, and do not include the Fairplex impact.
Mr. Gavaldon, if you could complete your thoughts, I would appreciate it. You have three minutes.
Okay. Maybe we should get a clock here so everybody can see actually where the time is. But I'll ask that you dig deep and have the courage to see where this is going since you all live here and you're all impacted on your neighborhood streets by what this will bring down the road that you built now.
Thank you, Mr. Gavaldon. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Ms. Bocham?
At the moment, I'm speaking on behalf of another resident in the city. He's a Laverne resident who wrote a letter to the city pertaining to the housing element. He submitted the letter in time for the letter to become public record and be included in the agenda packet. To his extreme disappointment, the letter was not included. That is when he contacted me and asked me if I would read the main points of his letter on behalf. I told him that I too was disappointed his letter was not properly processed and explained that had has happened to me in the past as well. Here are Mr. Aragon's comments. State law requires local governments to prepare an inventory of land suitable for residential development, including vacant sites and sites having the potential for redevelopment, and an analysis of the relationship of zoning and public facilities and services to these sites. The inventory of land suitable for residential development is used to identify sites that can be developed for housing within the planning period. The 2023 to 2029 housing element is the city's housing plan, which includes the goals, policies, and programs the city will implement to address constraints and needs. The city's overreaching objective is to ensure that decent safe housing is available to all current and future residents at a cost that is within reach of the diverse economic segments that comprise Laverne. To promote a variety of housing opportunities that accommodate the needs of all income levels of population, which includes Laverne's fair share of extremely low, very low, and low to moderate income housing by promoting the city's program of density bonuses and incentives. He normally does not agree with the planning commissioner, Mr. Allison, Thomas Allison, and some of his opinions, but in this case, it is time to put a viable plan together and get a beautiful high-density housing and retail shops planned together for the defunct Sierra Laverne Golf Course. While South Laverne is carrying the burden of the most of the mobile home parks and low-income housing, it is time for North Laverne to get in on the action and carry its fair share of this burden, especially with the ideal location. Transportation to these areas would be easy. Transit busing or trolley system would loop from Foothill to Wheeler to Golden Hills, back down Esperanza. Trolley system would provide service up and down Wheeler to Arrow Highway utilizing the center median, much like a tram ride, incorporating it with the new metro link, Golden Line Terminal, with a drop-off zone, Wheeler and Golden Hills. This will put Laverne miles ahead of the curve and provide jobs and tax-based monies coming into our city. Think of all the new residents of Laverne working and shopping in our town, not to mention the property tax coming in and all while meeting, if not exceeding, the RINA numbers set forth by the state of California. The reality is, cities are becoming more populated and we need to grow responsibly with the times and get ahead of this and prosper at the same time. Just to be prepared, I believe the mayor, Mr. Hepburn, the city council members, and Ms. Bochak should contact the contractors who are building the project on Fruit Street and Amherst and schedule, and also the scheduled contractor for Pomona Project and the Paseos, as well as the owner of the Sierra Laverne Golf Course Country Club, and bring all parties together for a roundtable discussion on this matter. Anyone who loves our city should be in favor of this ambitious and worthwhile undertaking. Thank you for your time, Mr. J. Aragon.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham.
And now I have my own comment.
We kind of gave you three minutes, but I'm going to give you some time.
Okay.
If you could please.
I appreciate that. Thank you. In both the city council meeting that took place on October 17th and the planning commission that took meeting that took place on November 2nd, it was stated by Mr. Shearer that the city had met their obligations by offering workshops and having meetings with members of the community. Several of the workshops were conducted via Zoom, which was at the beginning and in the middle of the pandemic where attendance was dismal. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, the city of Laverne has 31,334 residents. The general plan survey that was available to the residents, only 25 people replied to that survey. I mean, let's stop and think about that. 25 people out of 31,000, that is eight tenths of one. It's not even 1% full percent of the city. And not only that, but you have eight mobile home complexes within our city for a total of 1,754 total spaces. Another question on the survey was, what type of housing do you reside in? Not one person in that survey stated they lived in a mobile home. So again, how is this meeting the obligation when the city omitted an entire demographic of the city? This is most certainly discriminatory against the elderly as six of the eight mobile home parks are for seniors 55-plus. I'm a little bit confused as Ms. Tropiano stated at the October 17th meeting that the city was in, quote, "a great position" and did a great job planning for the future. Yet today, I received copies, another CEPRA act, of the threat that was posed to the city if they did not comply with the state of California RINA numbers. I don't understand how those two can exist at the same time. If the city's in good position, how is it that someone, regardless of who they are, can just complain and say that we're not in compliance? At that same planning commission meeting, there was an actual commissioner who was unable to differentiate between the housing element and the general plan. These are the people that are key elements in assisting the city council in making decisions on recommending or denying projects which they feel are good or bad for the city. So if they are unable to determine between the two and make a decision, how is that an accurate decision for you to base your vote on today? This example supports my request for additional workshop or education for the residents. As elected officials, you have an obligation to provide answers to the questions posed by our constituents. Many of us have attended these meetings pertaining
Many of us have attended these meetings pertaining specifically to the housing element, yet have yet to receive responses to our emails.
Ms. Bocham, if you could wrap up.
I understand. I believe the best way to resolve this is to have each council member offer a workshop within their district and have a representative of city staff, Ann or Ms. Troppiano, or someone from her company, to help answer questions with the residents and understand the magnitude and level of importance of the housing element. I respectfully ask that the city cease with the intentional disregard for requests from the residents and accommodate us and offer a workshop, community forum, or study session to further educate the residents, as they are the ones who will be forced to live with their decision that will affect all residents citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Ms. Anderson.
These people on the planning commission, I guess it's nice to live in the middle of Laverne, and if there's a fire or an earthquake, they can just take a road and get out of there. We live in a high-fire area in North Laverne, extremely high-fire area. We've been told by most of the people, Lyle said, "Not at this time." I don't think Seager was able to say that. The rest of you said, "You will never rezone that area." Okay, and I'm holding people to that because there's no way out of that area. We have two main roads, and it's full of wildland around there. If you try to get off of Golden Hills and go down Esperandala, the two sides of that turn is all, it's just wild. If that caught on fire, you can't even get down that road. So now we just got Wheeler to go down. You start building up there, and you're gonna have a situation like that city, Pleasantville or whatever, people dying in their cars to get out of there. Because we have to have, we have to have people come up, you know, emergency services, and we have to get down. You build on that golf course, it's gonna be ridiculous to get out of there. You can't build another road down. You can't build down the golf course. That's, now we're hitting county, and where are you gonna end up, on the middle of Baseline Road? It's gonna be disaster. So these people who are on the planning commission, they don't know what they're talking about. They need to go up there and look. It's nice to live in the middle of Laverne, where you can take a car, you know, take your car to Pomona, or you can go to San Dimas, or go to wherever you want to get out of there. We couldn't get out. It's bad. We've had fires up there. We were almost evacuated. And you know what? I'm thinking, how are we gonna get out of here? We have to get all our stuff together, you know, evacuation's a hard thing to do in the first place. You gotta know what to take. And then you have to get in your car and try to get out of there with a fire like that coming. San Dimas Road is not a road to get down. That's a windy, tiny road, and where does the fire come down? San Dimas Canyon. That's where it comes from, goes San Dimas Canyon. There's only one way out of there, down the hill. And to put any houses on that golf course, who the hell do we have on the planning commission? Do they not drive to Laverne and see what they're talking about before they say something? That's ridiculous. We don't need people on the planning commission that has an agenda. We need people on the planning commission that can plan and look before they start talking. So if, Mr. Cash, Mr. Hepburn, those are your districts. I wanna know about something happening up there, and I'll get all of the 500,000 people at the meeting. Because it's just ridiculous that somebody would even say that on the planning commission. Who do they think there are? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Ms. Brenner.
Good evening. My name is Edie Brenner. I have something to say about the South Calamity. Since I went to last Wednesday, the Fair Plan, Fair Ground Plan in Pomona, when I visited there, they have very good presentation, very clear. I was happy to see they still keep the farm, they still keep some, you know, not really like changing everything. So that's good to know, have an open house like that, let residents come to know about what's happening.
Ms. Brenner, this is not for the...
I know. I just wanna compare that, okay? So because, but the most I saw, I see, I saw it the most resident when there is this complaint and have a negative comment because they think, where's the water come from? We lack the water. Where's the electric come from if you put like such a city put in fact? And then how about the traffic? So that's mostly a concern. So that's why tonight I had to make it because it's about our city. Something is kind of similar. Because when a city develop, have more housing coming, that means more population. So now we have 30,000, not really much people, it's a good city, but if the housing coming, I heard about it's pretty much up to 10,000 people in coming a year, maybe more than that. So I have same concern. How about the traffic? How about the water? How about electric, right? And then also, I was disappointed about the commission making decision for the Amster Project, right, as part of the residence to reduce that housing project. And also, I implement, I really proposed a foot street, that 50 unit next to Luton High School. The most concern is traffic, but actually, we didn't really take any, any comment was taken. Still keep 50 unit, so that means our comment is really mean nothing to them. So that's really mean so disappointed. So I'm thinking if today's a hearing, that means you guys will still listen to some voices from the resident. I hope everybody will think about it. Why people like Laverne, why we move here? Maybe because it's small city, less population, better life quality, but with the housing project have more housing come in, the quality will be different. I still remember my house just remodeled 500 feet three years ago. We have two here and here. I say, what? What if we do? Why is this such a waste of resource? But that is really respect my neighbors. They come to say, please, house could put 500 feet or not. So they have right to say that. But in the future, I couldn't say no to any neighbor around me that build a two-story apartment next to my house and then have a normal privacy. That is what's happening right now. So I hope that new council member here, Cash, Stephen, and then we respect you, mayor, and then, so all people here, we respect you guys. But when every decision you're making is really all about residents' future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? I stand by, let's go to the other.
So Mr. American, go to Marcus Basely first, and then I'll call Mr. Bowman, since we have the audio issue.
Good evening, council, can you hear me? Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Marcus Basely. I'm a member of the California Council, and I live and I work in the city of Laverne. The city should use, or the city should require that projects be built by contractors that will hire locally, pay for building, and utilize apprentices for the state's certified apprenticeship training program. Workforce requires reduced construction-related environmental effects while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Roll: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030," the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reductions. Recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Number 20-Eleven, which requires that projects pay workers a prevailing wage and higher from state certified apprenticeship program, projects meeting certain safety, affordability, and development standards. Mayor and city council, thank you. That is my statement for tonight.
Could you guys hear that conversation?
Barely.
You could. Was it over the speakers?
He was here previously, so.
It wasn't over the speakers, but barely.
That's your fault.
Yeah, this is ridiculous. Hello?
Hi, Mr. Bowman, sorry about that.
Okay.
You're live with the council.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say that I certainly support Joe Gavaldón's comment. I looked at the presentation tonight, and a couple of things popped up to me, is that it appears that 40, fully 50% of the future housing has to be designated to extreme low income. And I forget the number for the low income, but that's, I think, another 10, 10 or so points. So 60% of future building has to be dedicated to either extremely low or low-income housing for the city of Laverne? That seems very odd. I would like to know how many other cities have to have 60% of their future housing dedicated to that income group. Laverne has prided itself for years on being a unique bedroom-type community. This certainly blows that up. Four council people have said in the past that they would never vote to redevelop the Sierra Laverne Golf Course area. And in fact, I believe councilperson Lyles said, when asked, she said, "Not at this time." And that was three or four years ago when she first ran. So it just appears that we were being forced to become a city. We've tried to be a stellar city in the past, and this says, no, you're gonna be like everybody else, or maybe worse. The last thing I'd like to comment is, how would the city look if this was the planning 15 years ago? I think our city would look definitively different than it looks today. I appreciate you listening, my colleague.
Thank you.
Good morning, mayor and city council. I just wanted to make one thing clear. I actually sent in a letter that details the reason for my no vote, but I wanna make sure that we don't conflict issues. Mr. Aragon's position is not the same as mine, although he may align with my position. That is not what I'm advocating for. And in fact, the reasons I'm advocating for a no vote are simply because of the concentration of affordable housing in one triangle. Not necessarily that in particular part of the city needs to be developed at this point. So just wanna make that one clear in case Ms. Anderson believes that that was the point being made by my no vote.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Thank you for taking my call. After listening to the presentation and other comments, I see a very disjointed review of our housing situation and our plan of growth. If we don't have the electrical built in, if we don't have the roadways built in, I think we are losing a lot of what this city is about and the accommodations for existing as well as future residents. I would like to really encourage you to vote no at this until an all-encompassing review of not only housing, but all the other utilities and roadways can also be considered so that we don't have the Northern California Paradise situation, which has been pointed out could very peacefully happen here. Again, I'd like to encourage a no vote on this. Thank you.
No other emails, sir? That's it? We're gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back up to the...
I got one. Before you finish.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Please. I rescind what I just, I rescind what I just said. I have a speaker on anyway. Ms. Gallegos, good evening.
Yes, Ivan Gallegos, President of Laverne. I just wanted to clarify because Mr. Bowman stated some facts about 60% being very low income and low income, which isn't the case. It is 48.5%. I took these screenshots from the last meeting on November 2nd, so I have an updated status, so forgive me if I'm not exactly accurate. So 48.5% of the city's RENA is dedicated to very low or low-income housing, but not to be also done by the 469 units that are above moderate income households. And then just to be clear, the very low income goes up to $59,100, which is about $30 per hour, which is, I don't even know how to say it, it's, you know, it's $30 an hour, that's, that's, you know, sad that that is, you know, an income that people have, and it's considered very low income. Low income goes from $59,000 up to $94,600. And yeah, again, it's sad to say that that, up to $94,000 is considered low income. So I'd ask you to consider, you know, again, both city residents and what those salaries are. I know what my salary is. I live here in Laverne. I have often said that I'm very lucky that I bought my property in 2013, as opposed to in 2020, because I, with my income, would not be able to afford to live here. And I really would hate to think that people of my income would not be able to afford here in Laverne, because it is such a great facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallegos. Anyone else wish to speak? We're gonna close public comment now, bring it up to the day of council. We're Pro Tim Crosby.
So this is our, this is not new to us. This has come to us a lot, and I don't have any specific questions to our plan. I just wanna thank the group that has helped develop it, and especially to Mr. Shear. He's helped me, educated me on this housing project about, what was it? It's about 590 pages on this report, and appreciate, I feel that I took a class for this and should receive at least a degree or something. So I just thank you for that.
Would you like a certificate?
You know what? I want a happy face on it.
Give you a smile.
But again, appreciate the work that our staff has done on it. And about the zoning, it is not to... it is not to be rezoned. There's no mention in this plan to rezon Sierra Laverne. There's actually no mention in this plan to rezon any part of Laverne and change the zoning in Laverne. So I just want to make sure that's clear to a couple people that were listening as well, because that seems to have come out. So again, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Laub.
I want to echo Mayor Protem's comments for thanks and gratitude for the work. It's not been an easy project or pursuit to make sure that we're on top of the housing element. Any of my own comments, other than sending my thanks to staff, is also thanks to the community for being engaged and bearing with us as we move through all of this. And then I think a comment for us and then for future council members and planning commission members and community members as we go forward. There is nothing, you know, really before us, other than a housing element that denotes what is possible. You know, there is no, you know, there's no developer here today to say, "This is what I'm building. This is what I'm not building." But I do think it's a reminder, as we look at the needs of not just our community, but our county and our state, is that we're intentional when those opportunities do come to us. So, you know, I think to Ms. Gaygo's point, I think that the terms low income or extremely low income have a negative connotation, but in reality, when you look at fifty-nine thousand, I know what I started making as a young professional. And if it wasn't for the fact that my parents had money to help me out to put the down payment on my house, I would not have been able to move here, you know, especially as a single woman. And so I just want people to be thoughtful about that, that when we talk about being an inclusive community and really opening doors, we're opening doors to young families. We're opening doors to young professionals, young laborers, young workers that want to start their families and grow in beautiful places like Laverne. And so how can we do that together? So I think that's just a reminder to us as developments come to us, how are we being intentional and thoughtful in that, in determining our infrastructure, in determining placement, and determining how we're addressing those needs across the city. So again, thank you to staff. Thank you to the community for being engaged. I appreciate I've learned a lot from a lot of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laub. Councilmember Johnson.
That used to be mine. That's where I sat before. It's harder.
I want to echo, Wendy, we got our starter home here. It wasn't easy. We had help from parents to get started in Laverne. I appreciate that very much, very much. And looking at my own children, they still haven't been able to purchase their first home. So we do need more affordable housing, not necessarily low, low-income housing. I'm sure we have a need for that as well, but for our children to be able to live in this town, that's important. And they need those starter homes, just like we've had. I appreciate everything the staff has done getting us to be in compliance. I think that's a very lofty goal, and we've succeeded. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the work on the planning commission to get this to us.
Councilmember Cash.
The other day I was driving. My wife, we were getting off the freeway, and she's like, "You know what? I want to, wish I could just..." And my wife stopped. She's a complete introvert, not like me. And she said, "I like to keep Laverne for Laverne." And that just hit me. And, you know, for my wife, there really was not much to comment. And I told her, "Well, you know, Laverne's a great town. I grew up here as a kid." I remember it was five of us in one apartment right here on College. And I understand how it was to hard work hard. And I thank the military for giving my BA loan to purchase my home. Thank God for that every day. But any perception of changing this city, I'm not going to do. I love this city. And I love when people come to the city of Laverne. Only thing I'd love to change, I would like to have a big enough sign that says, "Welcome to Laverne." So I want to do want to keep Laverne. And I do appreciate the hard work from our staff, hours on end. And I'm sorry for bothering you. Sometimes I go in with some crazy questions and ideas, but I appreciate your feedback. But I also serve you and serve the people here at City of Laverne. And I'm a man of word. And I know there's only few of us. There's not thirty-three thousand, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four articles said here today. But I've gone and I do every single week, I get out there and I talk to people in the community, tell them what you'd like to see in Laverne. And they all say, "I want to keep Laverne." No one said anything else. So I remember the last comment I had from an amazing lady that lives here. She said, "Sometimes I just like to go outside and look out the window and just kind of see the mountain." You got it. So it is what it is. So I'm here to serve you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. I appreciate all of our council comments. I do appreciate the residents' comments. I really appreciate Community Development Director Shear and his staff, and also the Nova Planning. This has been a long time coming. This wasn't overnight. And it may seem like there's only a few residents that participated, but if you look at the slides and everything else, there's quite a few residents that participated in this. And it's very important. It's very important for the affordable housing element. It's very important for the fact that we comply to a certain extent. We don't always agree with the compliance, but I think on this one, I think we're in good shape. I just, as Councilmember Johnson stated too, that I remember my first home in Laverne and thank God that there was an assumable loan because the interest rates were twenty-two percent, twenty-one percent. And we assumed eleven percent. We thought that was absolutely the greatest thing since, you know, chocolate ice cream. But, and now, two of our children have been able to purchase homes. My third child just got married. It's not so easy now. And we want to try to make it affordable for everyone, but not lose the character of our beautiful city. I think that's the most important thing. And everyone's welcome in our community. And I think that this element, and yes, a lot of the development is down on the airport or down there, but that's where the gold line is. That's why we have the gold line. That's why we have the transportation. It's for that and develop that area down there. And hopefully with the developers, we'll have a hand to make sure that they do have an affordable element in that. So I thank everyone. It was quite an effort, and I do thank you very much for that. On that, I need a motion.
I move, so move to pass the housing element plan.
Second.
Thank you. To adopt the resolution twenty-two seventy-seven. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Vote, please. You got it? Thank you, council. We move to other matters. Approval of city manager agreement.
Only two tries. I have the mic.
Attorney Press will be taking this one, sir.
Yes, it's my pleasure to continue talking about the future. The city council has selected the next city manager. His name is Ken Domer. And tonight, presenting his contract of employment. The council had negotiations with Mr. Domer. I was given a list of the terms and conditions to put into an employment agreement. The employment agreement contains all of the required provisions from state law, and it's very closely modeled after the previous two city managers' contracts. There's nothing very exciting here, salary, benefits, terms, and so forth. But the council has seen this agreement in this form before, and Mr. Domer has seen it. And tonight, we're just formalizing the approval. So unless there are any questions, it would be appropriate to move to adopt resolution twenty-two seventy-six.
Do you have any public comment on this? Open up for public comment. Ms. Newman.
Captain Newman, from Hill Terrace. I just have a question of why, it seems like he lives about thirty miles from here. And it used to be a six-mile radius, and it was approved that Mr. Rossi could live that seven to nine miles, but now it's like almost thirty miles. So that seems odd to me that that would be allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you speak on this matter?
Do you have a chance to turn speaker or do you have a chance?
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council. I, thank you for putting up with my call. I just want to thank the city for moving forward so quickly to fill its critical positions. It could have drawn out for quite a while, so I think acting quickly is the best way to assist the city. I also want to wish Mr. Domer a long and prosperous career with our city. As a reminder, I would like to call attention that if you look at the city org chart, it does say citizens first, council second, city management after that. I do have a couple of questions under benefits. It indicates that the employee shall be entitled to optional benefits regarding waiver of medical insurance as provided in Administrative Regulation Number Three oh six. Is that a dollar amount? Is he not taking city insurance and getting paid a dollar amount instead? So that's my first question. Also, that he gets immediately sixty hours of vacation time. Is that fairly standard? Usually vacation time is accrued, or maybe I'm reading that wrong, but it says the employee shall initially, excuse me, it says employee shall be initially credited with eighty hours of vacation time and then accrued at a hundred and eighty hours per year. And the maximum is four hundred hours, and that is a true cap. That is no over overflow into a four oh one. So if you can answer this question, I appreciate it. And I welcome Mr. Domer and hope he has a great success for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else in the public? Would you just speak on this matter? We're going to close public comment and bring it up to the desk. We probably should answer those questions first.
Sure.
Let the insurance one. Here.
I'll tend to, and then you can correct me if I missed something. The AR, that was referenced. That's something that's been in place. It is a medical and lieu provision for employees that have medical coverage elsewhere. It's a six hundred dollar amount that Mr. Domer would be receiving instead of receiving, you know, the thirteen hundred dollars, which is what would be eligible for other like employees that have a family. The vacation time upfront is standard for this level of employee coming from another agency with the level of experience and similar to the amount that he would be receiving per year based on his long experience with public agencies. That is standard. And then it is a true cap of four hundred. It won't be going into the four oh one that other employees are eligible for.
We also had the question regarding the distance from where they live. We took that out a few years ago? A year and a half? We took that out about a year and a half ago. We just figured that wasn't relevant any longer, so. I'll start with Mayor Protem Crosby. Any questions or comments?
No, it was to what Mr. Bowman said. We wanted to make sure and get this job filled. It was a great pool of candidates, but Mr. Domer rose to the top and have a lot of confidence in his abilities and really excited to have him start in December.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Laub.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this was a really good process. I've been a part of a number of executive searches, whether it's for work or, you know, my company, or for my company, or for the university or other places. And I just really want to commend the consultants for finding this really good pool of candidates. This council for having really good discussions and thoughtful dialogue about who was going to come and be our next city manager. And also a thank you to the department heads who also have the opportunity to meet with the candidates, the top candidates, so that they could provide their input. Because I do think it's very important that the people who will be basically working for this person has buy-in and has feedback. So I think it's been a really good process overall, and I'm looking forward to what the next chapter for the city is.
Thank you, Councilmember Laub. You can turn that off. Councilmember Johnson, remember, tap, tap.
Got it. I too would like to welcome Mr. Domer to the Laverne City Council, a city manager. Looking forward to it. Appreciate the new blood that's been brought to the city council. The process was amazing as far as the talent that we had to choose from. I think Ken was definitely the top choice for everybody. And it's nice to have a council rally around somebody. I think good things are ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the council and the staff here rallied around this amazing individual. Let's give this man a chance. Before we sit here and strike you about four hundred hours of vacation, whatever the case might be, let's give this person a chance, depending how far they live. I don't know, maybe he needs to drive a Tesla. Can we get a little closer to the gas line? But if you can make the city better, if you can make the city better, let's give him a chance to make the city better. That's all we're asking. And if not, we'll have great news here and we'll discuss otherwise. But until it approves otherwise, let's see what this person can do. I really hope to wish him nothing but the best to make the city the best he can, take care of the staff that work here, take care of the citizens that work here, stick care of everybody else, and hopefully answer my hundred different asks that I'm going to have waiting for him. And I have his cell phone. I've been calling him. Thank you, Jess, though, by the way. Thank you, Jess. I periodically jump out the bushes when I see you walking in and even ask you questions, just to test your visibility. But I got you right there. I do that, folks. I do. He wears his hat, and he's got his headphones, but...
He actually does.
I do. But, you know, welcome. So let's do our best to unite the city and see what we can do with this man. Hopefully that's good things for our city, and I look forward to the future. And hopefully I can retire and come work for here for that many hours of vacations. I gotta call him scared or something at work, but no. God bless. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, you have a go back.
First time. I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated working with Jess during this transition. I think we've been blessed to have you. Thank you, Jess.
I'm still going to tap you tonight.
That's the first thing I want to say, because I know that sometimes when a person, especially a city manager leaves, that there's a vacuum there, and it's hard for the employees. And I want to thank Mr. Duff. He definitely was a calming effect. He's very calm. You wouldn't know it, but he's very calm and very knowledgeable, a great amount of experience. And I really appreciate that. And that's a great conversation. I know everybody else was, even though we've got a council member jumping out of the bushes at him sometimes, but other than that, it's fine. But no, we couldn't have done this without you, and I too seriously appreciate that. I also appreciate all of our staff. We had an amazing pool of candidates, and it was difficult. It was difficult. But the nice testament to our wonderful city is the fact that we had a lot of candidates, and there was a large pool of candidates. And they were all very excited to come to the city to be here. And for me, as most of you And for me, as most of you know, change is good as long as it's positive change. And I think that this is going to be an extremely positive change for us. Mr. Dolmer comes with a tremendous amount of experience. I think he's going to be extremely good for this community. He's going to be hands-on. He's going to be upfront with all the residents. He's going to be here all the time. So Ms. Nuland, don't worry about the distance.
Okay.
He's going... You'll be surprised. He will be, from what I understand, I think he will be hearing from mostly everything we do until I already know who he is. But I'm very excited about this. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for us. And with that, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, you vote please. Welcome, Mr. Dolmer. Thank you again, Mr. Duff. We do appreciate that. We move to public comment, and we have a couple of people that... Ms. Best, you wanted to speak again, public comment?
I do. Not yet. Lemon marmalade in January, orange marmalade in February. But independent of that, to Mayor Tim Hepburn and city council members Crosby, Lau, Kashawakita, and Johnson of Laverne. On Wednesday, November 16th, my husband and I attended the open house about the Fairplex specific plan, a collaboration between the city of Pomona and the county of Los Angeles to reimagine land use for the 487-acre Fairplex campus. Founded in 1922, Fairplex is a 501(c)(5). It was organized to promote agriculture, horticulture, and other industrial and commercial interests. Fairplex's original mission was to serve as a place, a convener, and a creator of memories to strengthen the community and regional economy through arts and entertainment, agriculture, education, and commerce. This mission is changing to include year-round events on a campus that will incorporate onsite living and enhanced commercial development. The Fairplex specific plan proposes year-round cultural and business events, commercial retail businesses, recreational areas, educational programs, and an array of housing types that will house approximately 20,000 residents within a .716 square mile area that adjoins Laverne and will be directly connected by a planned pedestrian bridge. Because of this, Laverne residents have a clear and compelling interest in the Fairplex plan design, the supportive management models of community spaces, and the impact on all of the residents living within the area. These are some of our thoughts about the Fairplex specific plan meeting and suggestions going forward. The Fairplex specific plan open house on November 16th seemed to create more frustration than answers to persons attending this event. We believe that this situation was due to a mismatch between employee information and attendee concerns. The Fairplex employees presented a visioning, or overview of ideas, with beautifully rendered images and names for housing clusters that included the Agri-Hood 500 units, the Wellness Village 6,000 units, and the Preserve 4,000 units. In contrast to the Fairplex employee visioning statements, community attendees posed questions about traffic mitigation, residential parking congestion, public safety, loss of current Fairplex attractions such as the racetrack, and potential increased crime from changes in housing density. I witnessed growing frustration from attendees as they were referred to other tables to meet with other persons, told to express their concerns to Caltrans, and told to wait until the process moved to a phase of more detailed answers. There was a growing sense that resident questions were not being answered, some felt deliberately. This created an unfortunate dynamic and one not likely to enhance communication. From the Fairplex specific plan website, I read that the two-year planning process for this project promised that, since Fairplex is a public amenity, the local community should have a clear voice in planning new development. To engage community members more productively in the planning process, I suggest the following. One, hold multiple ongoing meetings in different venues in both Pomona and in Laverne to present the community vision of the new Fairplex campus. So we would have more people attending. Two, collect and organize all community comments and make them available for public review. Use community comments to identify themes of emerging concerns. If citizens come to believe that their concerns are not heard and then addressed, they will be inclined to abstract or disengage from the process. Lots of people wrote comments. I want to see where those comments are going to go. And I would like to see comments that other people wrote. Three, address emerging community concerns with straightforward and functional responses. For example, how many housing units will be rentals? How many will be owner-occupied? Is there a public safety model being funded to ensure the well-being of residents, visitors, and vulnerable populations? Will Pomona and impacted portions of Laverne be protected by parking permits for residents who live immediately adjacent to Fairplex? What changes in policing will occur to maintain safety at the Laverne and Pomona L-line stations? Who will pay for these enhanced services? Will the racetrack remain? These are all questions that seem to pop up during the conversation. And four, develop a citizens committee to follow in the planning process and report on a regular basis to residents. If the Fairplex campus is developed, we must evaluate its success by surveying the experiences of the residents, employees, business owners, visitors, and neighbors living in the adjacent communities at intervals and over an extended period of time. The measures that will determine the success of the Fairplex specific plan should include indicators of quality of life, personal experiences and interactions within and around the Fairplex campus. Other data sources would come from law enforcement and concerns reported by residents, visitors, business owners, and staff. Going forward, the proposed plan would need to include, but not be limited to, grocery stores, childcare support for working parents, empowerment supportive services for youth and persons with disabilities, educational tutoring support for students, supported property management staff for building and public areas, and adequate off-street parking available for residents, visitors, and employees. The size of this area is actually the size of a small city. If it is realized, this plan, we all want the legacy of the Fairplex specific plan to be a model of how higher-density mixed populations and mixed-use urban planning can work. Unfortunately, the Fairplex specific plan could easily devolve into an exchange model of interaction with so many trade-offs and too many disconnecting parties that it fails to ever come together as a coherent, constructive, integrated community. We need a community of people who recognize the importance of their commonwealth and who are willing to make sacrifices for the development and maintenance of us all. Transparent and meaningful collaboration will help bring about cooperation toward building a coherent, constructive, integrated community. It will pay off as all stakeholders come to know and believe in the work in which they engage. Right now, leaders of local municipalities and residents are feeling pressure to absorb change not of their making, especially in housing density. Clear, consistent, and regular dialogue will help us to maintain our focus on each other for the good of our cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Best. Anyone else wish to public comment? Ms. Bocham.
I would like to respectfully ask Ms. Bochak or whoever else is in the development department to please contact the existing contractors that are working on the projects of Amherst and Williams and Fruit Street to remind them of the noise ordinance. As I live three houses away from the Fruit Street project, I hear their nail guns and compound saws well before 7:00 a.m. My alarm goes off at 5:30, and I'm already hearing them at 6:00. So that is something that needs to be addressed. The trucks that are driving down Amherst are running the stop sign at Guava and Amherst, which is directly in front of my house, and they are exceeding the posted speed limit. I believe Mr. Waken addressed this when he addressed the city council as the original land purchaser, developer for this project. So he assured us that they would be abiding by city ordinances, and it obviously is not that way. And right now, we have double-trailer gravel trucks coming down Amherst. So when they're flying down the street that fast and running the stop... Luckily, right now, the kids are not in school because of Thanksgiving holiday. But come next week, when those kids are back in school and they're running that stop, it's going to be an issue. And I know PD is shorthanded, but I would love to see a cop sitting out there. Also, I would like to ask Councilwoman Lau, since you're on the board for the University of Laverne, the parking structure that is on Arrow and D Street just set back a little bit. There are lights with flags that talk about learning and experience and things like that, and it kind of distrives what kind of experience you're going to have at the university, which are really nice, I mean, it's beautiful. But why aren't those lights solar activated? They all have lights, some work, some don't. Even the sign that says University of Laverne, some bulbs are brighter than others. It kind of, it's like, it's really nice in the daytime, but then when the lights come on, it just kind of takes away from that. I think, you know, we're constantly talking about carbon footprint and electric vehicles and, you know, Ms. Brennan was just talking about electricity for the city. Why aren't going forward these new projects utilizing solar and other alternative methods for things like that? I think that's something that should be considered as well. I'm glad Ms. Best addressed the issue of the housing situation at the complex. I know Mr. Scher said the record straight that that project had nothing to do with the housing element that you voted on tonight. But the point I wanted to make was that the 1,500 units that would be on the Laverne actual owned property section could constitute and meet the Rena numbers by that one project alone, and we wouldn't have to address any other issues in the city. But I agree 100% with what she said. That open house was... I was there almost the entire time. Mr. Johnson walked in together, and there were very few attendees there. But I posted something on Nextdoor, and it is still getting comments. It's over 600 comments. So there is definitely people who are interested in this and want to give their opinion, but just, you know, that obviously wasn't, you know, the place to do it. And what's really unfortunate is that I can't be in two places at once because City of Pomona had that on their consent calendar for tonight. Yes, their amendment, their interim agreement was on their consent calendar for tonight's city council meeting for City of Pomona. So they're doing things without people being able to express their agreement or disagreement because we're here, because this is the city we live in. But this is the city we're adjacent to, we should have a voice there as well. And I think as council, you should maybe work out some kind of agreement with their council to say, no, we can't have these projects or similar types of topics at the same time that, you know, residents need to... Because like she said, there are three stakeholders there, and all residents should be involved, especially with the metro and that bridge and what kind of traffic it's going to direct between both directions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Anyone else? Ms. Watten.
Thank you, Jill Watten. This is something I have been complaining about for months and months and months. And it's the flag that flies at night in darkness. It is dark out there. And there's two ways of fixing it. There's a flag or there's a spotlight down below, but it doesn't reach up to the flag. So you either put that spotlight up on the roof where it shines on it, or take the flag down at dusk as flag etiquette demands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gavlin.
All good? Sharon, that was one of the best comments I think I've ever heard since my coming to the council. I want to thank you on behalf of the lot of residents.
Yes, absolutely.
I thank you too. It was eloquent, it was well-written, and I think you made a lot of points. I said I'd be back. One, I do think we need to get a clock. The time is here for Laverne to spend a little dollars, a few dollars, get these speaker sticks, we can't hear it in the audience. Get a clock up here so people that are speaking know when it is that we cut off. Get ahold of Bob Rusty. If we need to get his little flags back, so we have an idea that the clock is running out. To the comment made about the housing element plan being a good plan and it's an outline, that's baloney. The Amherst project and the Brandywine projects were not part of the plan, they became part of the plan. And this council, including one, two, three council members that sit on this, voted to override the zoning that existed, that was three-to-one housing to eight-to-one. So that is a manure that the plan is not going to change how the city looks down the road, because you guys can basically vote against it. To the comments about how the housing element and the Fairplex projects are not tied together, that's baloney too, because a lot of the illustrations and the images in that presentation were in fact what we saw literally at the open house. So everything, everybody's working together. And additional, the signaling of that bridge, that $12 million, and getting everybody and their mother and the local political groups to kind of help us out, they knew all about it. So somebody else knew about that Fairplex plan. It's not a two-month, we just got, you know, dropped on this thing. You all knew about it, and I think people need to hear you fess up that this is not something that just happened. The time is coming. And I think I'm on the legal right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavlin. Anyone else wish to speak? Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, Slendra. I'm not quite sure about this housing thing. I think I've come up here before, maybe a year or two ago, with that San Gabriel, whatever council thing that goes on. Anyways, the stack and pad houses that are being built nowadays, it's totally against our mission statement. You know, we have a mission statement for Laverne, and it's taking away from... We're starting to look like Glendora. Everybody down, go down Glendora, it looks horrible with all those stack and pad houses. And now I see this thing at the Fairplex, and I went, oh my God. I just don't understand where all these people are going to be coming from to live in these places. You know, the United States is way below the birth rate. We should, we're in trouble. So where are all these people coming from that we need so many of these stack and pads? I don't understand it. It doesn't make any sense to me. So who's going to come here and live in these places? Everybody's leaving California, and the birth rate's down in the country. So who's going to be coming and living in these stack and pads? You know, and they're not very, they're not very healthy to live in. You've got a bunch of people together on top of each other, you know, the disease spreads, you've got crimes in there, you know, everything is just crazy. And where are these low-income people are going to get the money for this? Building is expensive, very expensive. So how do we get low income? Some people think we're going to get homeless in there. Who's paying for this? Is this going to come out of our taxes? That's what I want to know. I mean, who's going to start paying for this? So if we get low-income people in there, and it's not enough for the builders to build, then what's going to happen? I don't understand all of this thing that California's doing. And these people who are on the San Gabriel council, whatever it is, who agrees to this stuff drives me nuts. That's just a right arm of California, trying to change our cities to be all alike. They want us all to be, they want us all to be urbanized, especially this active transportation thing that's going to cost us a fortune. And... And that's what's happening in our city, and it's going to change, it's going to change the city, it's changing all our cities already, and some of them look really bad. And I don't know if we can have a, some kind of a code on how these things are going to look, because they look like everybody else's. You go down Anaheim, it's ridiculous. I mean, they're just all the way down the street, they're all over the place, it looks really bad. So are we going to have a code on how these things can look? Can they actually look like maybe, you know, some of the houses in Laverne or the neighborhoods in Laverne? Because they don't. They're very strange-looking. So I don't understand if anybody has an answer of who's going to be living in these places, and who's going to pay for the low-income people, because it doesn't matter, those places are going to cost money. So if they have to buy them, who's going to pay for it? And I just, I think that we need to start looking at, if we're going to have to have them, if we're going to make us have them, then how about looking like the neighborhoods of Laverne instead of just these awful-looking things? Wait, that, I'm sorry. I just drove by the one on Fruit Street, and I didn't know they were going to be right against the sidewalk. It looks bad.
Ten feet.
That doesn't even look like Laverne at all. I thought they were just going to be rows, you know, and people could drive into the driveway, but it looks pretty bad. So I don't know, maybe we can come up with a code on if the builders want to build here. I mean, the builders make a lot of money on these things, okay? They buy a little piece of property and they build up, so they're making a fortune on these things. And it's, it looks, it looks really bad. So maybe some kind of a design code that we can come up with that, you know, kind of fits in with the cities except for, instead of looking like everybody else's city, and that's what it's going to look like. I'm not real happy about that transportation thing we're going to be doing. It's going to cost us a fortune.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anyone else wants to speak? We got one on the, Ms. Allison.
Good evening. Just wanted to say a few things in my year, congratulations to the parents, coaches, volunteers, and administration, remembering the peaceful, wonderful season well done.
Can't hear it.
Family truly enjoying our season, I'm excited to look forward to continuing this experience. I'd like to also note, congratulations to the students of Laverne who have gone through district B300's first, the AI Conference at the University of Laverne, such a great event. District Governor Bruce Harris has already announced the next one they can face next year in Nevada. Thinking of how to take it along the legacy of the peace conference, it would be awesome to say that it all started here. Additionally, serving on several wards that serve the city and around, I know that some boards are celebrating a deal of work with their last board meetings, I wish to celebrate the many people who worked to make our communities better. Thank you all for everything that you do. To the staff, thank you all for what you do, I wish you a happy celebration with your boundaries. Be safe and enjoy your time for people who will not get time off because they are too busy to be safe. Thank you, we appreciate you. You are so much to us, thank you. And if you are here in my voice and do not have family, feel free to place a fine up this weekend, please do not hesitate to reach out, the Allison and Doug is a open door, and we look forward to meeting new neighbors, so have a great holiday and a good celebration.
Another hand, another email.
We're going to close, we're going to close public comment, bringing up the deus. Mayor Proton Crosby.
Joe, thank you. I walked out there tonight. It's not lit. On the bottom, and we talked about this last week, on the bottom, there is a light, but it's not shining on top of the flag.
Right.
So I brought out our city manager, Mr. Duff, and we looked at it right before the meeting, and yes, we need to fix it, just like we need to fix that flag, we need to fix that flag up there too. So thank you, and thank you for keep pushing, and thank you, I really appreciate that. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure to go to the Fodden Terrace Neighborhood Watch meeting. They have it about every quarter, a meeting, and got to bring Chief Nick to talk about fire and Battalion Chief Sam Dominic out there to speak. And so thank you for inviting me and letting me come to your Neighborhood Watch, I really do appreciate that. December 5th, our next meeting, we are going to have lighting and Christmas tree out here as well, so not just the December 3rd, want to remind you, come out before the meeting, we have the December 5th. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. My last piece is, "Tonight, I Have A Heavy Heart. My Thoughts And Prayers Go Out To The People Of Colorado Springs And Club Q." This hit home to me and my family because my cousin, Nick Rezeca, is the owner of Club Q and was present on Saturday. Thank God, he's unharmed, but too many people are needlessly harmed when these things happen. We need to love more and not hate. So thank you and thank all your families.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Crosby. Councilmember Cash. We've got some trouble with your plug, you two, so give me time.
Can I give you more time? Last Saturday, it was a great event that we had, thank Assemblymember Holden that passed out 200 turkeys, I was there. Mayor, Mayor Tim Hever, you were there, and Johnson, Councilmember, appreciate you guys coming out there, it was Passant turkeys and the needy and those that, four that could use a turkey, nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with giving out food for those that are, I think it's a great cause, and I hope that we continue another great cause here in Laverne, next year make it even bigger for that, I appreciate it. Went out right after that to classic car shows, saw all the cars that I wish I had. It's amazing cars, some really amazing cars, took a couple pictures of the cars that are my favorite. So that was really good, really good to see. It's good to see the community together, it was really good to see people smiling, it was good to see people together, it was good to see everybody there supporting small business. Please don't forget Small Business coming up, Small Business Saturday, that's how it comes, we're right after Thanksgiving, so right after Thanksgiving, you have, you know, Friday, then you have the Small Business Saturday, so please don't forget to shop Laverne, dine Laverne, live Laverne, right? So God bless and young dad, happy Thanksgiving to you and your family, I look forward to seeing you guys hopefully soon, and stay strong.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, we had a nice event Saturday, the car show, that was really nice and good to see the old truck in its present restoration phase, and seeing the opening of Menaro Square, that was very nice to see that as well. And Holden's event, giving away free turkeys, that was also special to be able to attend that. There's definitely a needy community. I guess it wasn't as fast as far as the people coming in, but maybe it was the location that you probably change that up, just next year we go to a more needy area. Have a happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and we'll see you in December.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Lau.
Thank you. Yes, look at that, first guy. I just wanted to say, just to report back, the Tri-Cities Mental Health Agency had a meeting last Wednesday, and I know the last thing any of y'all need is another meeting to go to, but their agenda and their meeting minutes are also available online, and I encourage you to take a look at it because it is really heartening to see the amazing services that they are providing to this community and neighboring communities as well. You know, everything from their therapeutic community garden to, you know, providing services for the homeless and for those with mental health issues, it really is amazing. One of their success stories, you know, this last month dealt with a young person who is LGBTQIA and really having a hard time communicating with his family about his identity. And so they really helped that family navigate that, and I think that's really important to really bring that enlightenment and that education, to make sure that people are feeling treated well and that people are being compassionate. So they're doing some really amazing stuff there. You know, again, if you can't make the meeting, totally understand that, but definitely feel free to take a look to see some of the really truly amazing things that they're a part of. It was also, as many people have already noted, the night of the Fairplex specific plan open house, and I do echo Ms. Best's comments that some of the, I think, communication was skewed, and definitely there were some emotions that were running pretty high, so I don't know that it served, to your point, some of the goals that they were hoping to achieve, because I definitely did see some folks get very upset about it, and opportunities for discourse were sort of shut down by that. So I think it's a good reminder for myself and Councilmember Johnson, as we both sit on the, as representatives to the Fairplex, as a reminder of how we can help communicate, how they can better communicate with the community. So we will keep that in mind. Again, the car show was lovely, it was a beautiful day for it, if you made it out, I want to say congratulations to Officer Alan Weinrebb, not to be confused with this cousin Martin, who is going to be our newest dog handler, as well as congratulations to Janessa Gonzalez, who is our SRO, who is being promoted. So very excited for both of them, it was a beautiful day, got to have a bird as for the first time in a long time, and never disappoints. So, and then on the same vein, is, you know, looking out for those in our community that may not have as much as others, I appreciate that Assemblymember Holden and members of this council participated in giving out turkeys. I would also urge that there is a University of Laverne Leo Food Pantry that is open year round. We do have students in need year round that are in need of food, and so they collect canned goods and disperse regularly out of the Lewis Center, so non-perishable items are always welcome. And so if you have the ability to assist, that would be greatly appreciated. They also do, on occasion, also do a clothing drive to help some of these young people as they're going out and interviewing and doing the things, you know, they don't always have a suit, they don't always have the things that they might need to look presentable for that interview, and anything that you might have in your closet that you might not wear anymore that could really help them would be so welcome. So definitely think about that, and then obviously, as we go into the holiday season, it is a, it is a hotbed of germs out there, from what I've been hearing from all my doctor and physician friends, you know, the flu is back like never before, RSV, if you've got kids or know people with kids, they're getting hit up, and it is not pretty. So just remember what we all learned during the pandemic, wash your hands for 20 seconds, you know, don't touch your face, even though I probably did it 50 million times during this meeting, but, you know, just be kind, have a wonderful week, the rest of the week with your families, hope you all get to celebrate and have some time to unwind, so be kind, have a good week.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. I just want to thank staff, Community Development Department, our Community Services Department, our Public Works for the car show, everybody was out, and the new stage is just really impressive, not quite finished yet, but it's going to give us a nice venue to have our stuff going on, whatever we have going for there, and I really appreciate that, it was really nice. It was a beautiful day, a gorgeous day, and then with the turkey giveaways that council members have talked about. Sherry, I want to personally thank you, I would agree with Mr. Gabbaldon, that I gave you as much time as you needed because you were so eloquent, and I got there just, like literally the doors were open. I wasn't going to go in, and this, the hair stood up in the back of my neck, it was like, Tim, you need to be there. And I wouldn't say I got attacked, I would say that I was, Mr. Councilmember Johnson and I, there's a lot of concerns there, and I remember the conversation in the city with previous Mr. Russey was Carvana, and how Carvana was going to come in and do such great things. Well, that didn't happen, and the reason it didn't happen is because the residents and even the city of Laverne had conversations with the owners of that facility, they were giving nothing to the community, they were giving no information, and all it was going to be is trucks and cars and noises, and I think this is the same situation. It was very unorganized, I mean, it was there, and I appreciate that, that they had it open to everyone, but that's a lot of people, and everyone I talked to, no matter Laverne, Pomona, or whoever, they said, this can't happen in our community because this is, this is going to affect all of us, whether it be White Avenue, whether it be Arrow Highway, whether it be Town, whether it be, you know, Wheeler. There needs to be vetted out, and I agree with you, this needs to be vetted out, and it needs to have the information out to the community, and I do appreciate that. And I generally don't talk about things like this, but I was there, and I was just, we were walking out the door, and they were still, you can't let this happen, we need to communicate this, this is a bad deal. So they really need to open up their eyes, and they need to open this up for people to really have communication with, because, you know, there's lots of places in all of our communities developed, Pomona has a lot of places internally in Pomona that could be developed. So, you know, they, I know they want to make money off this site, but I think it's very important to think about the people and how they live before they do that, so thank you, and we'll make sure we put that pressure on them also. Other than that, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, be with your loved ones, enjoy yourselves. If you have extra food and it's not going anywhere, package it up and bring it to a shelter. That's one thing, food waste is a big thing, and we shouldn't waste it, there's people that need it. All you have to do is look on, you know, check on the phone, check on the website, if there's people that have it, bring it to them. But otherwise, enjoy your families, be safe, and spend your money in Laverne, because turkeys are not sparse, they're everywhere, everybody knows. We have a closed session, is that correct, Mr. Duff?
Yes.
Well, we will not be reporting out, is that correct? Then, we will recess into closed session. Our next meeting will be Monday, December 5th, at 6:30 p.m. We have the annual tree lighting, as Mayor Proton Crosby said, ceremony to help next City Hall, love Carol of Santa Claus, and they're all expected to attend, so it's going to be fun, so let's make sure we're all here, and we'll make sure that that flag gets lit immediately. If not, I got fixtures at my shop, I'll bring over, we'll make sure we light that thing up, so. Anyway, thank you all. We will adjourn at 8:00, really, recess, closed session at 8:37.
There's coffee, Ben.